Called to order the Board of County Commissioners' work session for October 8th, 2013. Welcome everybody, please join us in the pledge of allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to every body for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and see as symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Okay, first item on the agenda is to approve the work session agenda.
Chairman, I approve the motion to approve today's agenda.
As I said, I'll second that motion, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say a five, say an aye. Aye. Motion passes. Okay, let's review October 10th, 2013 regular meeting agenda, John, you want to take that over?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, um, do you see, it's not too big.
Oh, it's pretty nice.
Um, start off with the expenditure report. Um, you noticed in packet is the expenditure report dated October 7th, 2013, it's for What the major expenditure is, is we've made a payment to the Soul Community Provider, which was $1.2 million. It was $1,159,718.14. That's, is on page 39 of 41. Um, that is the Indigent Fund and the Soul Community Provider Quarterly Payment that we sent up for, uh, to get the money back to Hila Regional.
We're sure we're gonna get the money back?
Yes, this is for the funding through, uh, this third quarter and the fourth quarter, so it'll be the, what, July, August, September, and October, November, December. So this is for that, and this is for the payments that they all, they should have received any day now, because we've sent it up, and then we'll make another payment in December that will be sent back to them, and then it's after January that we are not sure still.
That's a question mark again.
Yeah, it's still a question mark, we had a meeting yesterday, um, that, uh, the hospital kind of chaired the meeting, invited people throughout the community, HMS, some of the other providers to talk about trying to get people enrolled in the new insurance exchange program, set up a process, to possibly set up an enrollment center that we would keep open and have people staff there that are trained to do it, um, because that might be the saving grace there, that Soul Community Provider may become non-existent or very small after January, and the money come through people being enrolled in the insurance exchange is what we're thinking, so we're trying to proceed to make sure that we get as many people enrolled there. Um, other than that, when you take that one, two out of our normal expenditures, we're down around $600,000 without the payroll, which is a normal expenditure process for us, and then we've had some payrolls in here, um, is what gets us up to that $2.1 million. Um, the next is a proclamation to declare the month of October 2013 Domestic Violence Awareness Month, this is something we do every year, we're asked to do it by, um, the board from El Refugio sends it, um, the sheriff used to sit on there, do you still?
Yes, I'm the vice president.
Okay, and so each year, uh, the commission passes to declare the month of October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Usually El Refugio will be here to accept the petition, I'm not sure if they're gonna be here, the sheriff will be here for sure as the vice president, um, and so it's, it's a very good, um, they do good work for unfortunately a cause that I wish they didn't have to be in business for.
True.
Um, the next item is, um, we're gonna have a presentation by Mr. Radesky on an insurance proposal, we've been looking at, um, talked to the commissioners a little bit during the budget process of possibly leaving the state risk management pool and going out on our own for insurance. Under our procurement, anything under $60,000, we're allowed to do as professional service without going out for RFP, and we've gotten clarification from the state that insurance broker is a professional service, and so we're able to go directly to Mr. Radesky and talk with him and start getting some information, he's been looking at our current, um, history of our insurance and, um, and has talked with several insurance companies, and he's coming to give the commissioners a proposal on, uh, a program that we could possibly migrate off of the state onto that would be serviced locally, it would take some burden off of our departments, our staff, that right now currently Renee Callaway has to work on enrolling everybody back into insurance, which January is a new open enrollment because of the new whole insurance and the Obamacare, we have to go back and re, have everybody fill out their forms again in January and do a brand-new open enrollment after we've done it here in June. Um, as part of having Mr. Radesky as a broker, one thing he told us is that he would take care of that, if we had a new employee, if we had an employee with insurance, probably they would go see him and would take that burden off of Renee so she could focus more on the employee management stuff instead of insurance. Um, so he's coming to make a presentation to the commission on what he thinks he could do and what options he could provide us, and then if we wish to go forward with that, we'll go ahead and start proceeding to bring on the next meeting, uh, package to the commission to approve for us to go.
What would really help me if he would compare the two for us?
And that's what he's done, yeah.
Put both of them up so we can look at them.
And, and I've seen some preliminary stuff that he's given me to look at, that that's what he's doing, is he's taking currently what's offered to us under the risk management and what our fees are compared to what he can get us, and right now it's looking like he can get us a reduction in our costs plus a reduction in our time, that risk management doesn't factor in, so not only reduce our.
Is he filling some of the holes, because there was actually, I, you know, from a few of the incidents that I've had with, uh, having teenage kids, there's some holes in our insurance, and I know that our, our employees are seeing those holes also.
No, and that's what he's looking at, he's, he's trying to make sure, um, he wants to offer instead of one plan, he said he'd like to offer a couple of options still, but not the four or five options the state offers, pare it down some, um, I know one thing he spoke to me about is currently our long-term disability is only like 40% of your pay, and the industry standard is more of a 60 or higher, and so he's looking at something like that instead of the 40, the one thing that we're.
Certainly we have a deductible and a copay, which that's not a normal.
Yeah, so he's looking at, he's looking at some different items, looking at all those things, we've talked with him, um, one thing that he said he's thinking might happen is as more and more people start to pull out of risk management, because I guess there's communities that are, different cities and counties that are pulling out of the risk management, their pool is gonna drop, so that means the rest of us are gonna have to absorb the bad, um, medical costs that are in it, because there are, we're, we're competing, it, it helps us in a way that we're in with Bernalillo County, because we get all of their thousands of employees that help do it, but if they have four or five employees that have huge medical costs, we now have to pay for that as well, that's why we're looking at, we might be better on our own, because our history is, I think, at 70%, we've never hit 100% of our premiums, so we have a good medical history, um, as Grant County, so we should see reductions, not increases every year in our insurance rates, and that's what we're seeing is, is increases, because it's the pool that gets an increase, because if we're absorbing everybody else's bad.
And it might be worked out too, is where maybe he can make that a similar presentation than to the department heads and employees, uh, even before January.
No, and if we go forward, if, if the commission wishes to go forward with this after we hear from him and we bring something to the next meeting for you to approve, then that's what he'll do, is we'll set up meetings with the employees, we'll, we'll do everything and we'll, we'll educate everybody what's going on, one thing we told them is we don't want to lose any benefits, we want to make sure at a minimum we keep exactly what we have, but we would like better, and so that's what he's been looking at, is at a minimum we don't want to lose.
Presentation.
So, yeah, so he's putting that together, and he will be here tomorrow.
No, no.
Thursday, sorry. Um, the next is under new business, you have in your packet, um, this is the first one that's come in front of you, it's a, we have it as a presentation for a funding request from the National Center for Frontier Communities. Um, the commission approved that the health council would be kind of a screening agent or, I guess, I don't know, a clearinghouse for people wanting funding, non-government entities wanting funding from the commission. Um, the National Center for Frontier Communities has put together a proposal, it's gone in front of that group, um, you have it in your books, I've given you a copy of it in your boxes, um, it has been reviewed by the health council to say that it is consistent with the priorities Grant County Community Health Council and is included in the Grant County Community Health Improvement Plan, um, that was basically what their job was, is they were going to screen the programs and be the clearinghouse to make sure it meets the, the criterias in that community health plan, um, that it doesn't violate any anti-donation, um, that it meets the mission that the commission has, and so this passed, so what we thought we would do, because this is the first one, we're still hashing out the process, is we would bring it in front of commission that the group could make a presentation to you and tell you a little bit more than what is just on the paper, um, about it and why they're seeking the funding, um, and you look at the back of it, they have the budget where it's a $30,000 request with a $6,000 match, so it's a $36,000 program, so they have the match and they're requesting from the commission the $30,000, and so they will present, Susan is here as well, um, and Lisa, so they, I'm assuming you'll be the ones here Thursday?
Yeah.
Um, and so they will present this to you as a funding request of the commission.
And John, my team, I got a question, the balance is actually just $3,000.
Oh, okay, on this it says six, so.
The county of Silver City has pledged $15,000 if the county supports the program, so there's a $15,000.
So is there, because there's, and here it says there's $6,000, that's $30 an hour times 200 hours paid by nonprofits receiving individual consultation. So is it 15 plus that six?
You know, probably what you need to do, John, is just give them their, their proposal so they can have it and have it corrected before Thursday.
Okay.
You know what you're saying, so the, the total funding request, the 30,000, is 15,000 from the county, 15,000 from the city.
I was saying, quite the city, though.
No, it's 30,000, the, the request, their proposal is 30,000 to the county, and the town of Silver City has pledged an additional 15, so it's a grand total between the two organ, uh, governmental agencies, organizations have 45,000. Yeah, I apologize.
Those numbers ought to be reversed, their budget's about 10% higher than ours.
We'll go ahead and correct that budget and get the. Yeah, I, I apologize, I'm not really sure what that $6,000 is referring to, but.
Give you the copy that I had.
Okay, thanks.
Can you tell us, please?
So.
And I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Um, the next item is resolutions, it's approved, disapproved resolution, R 1369, Section 3 of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968, this is, goes along with, we had those couple resolutions at the last meeting that are for, um, the CDBG program, um, this one wasn't included just because I had to get the updated numbers on the third page for the, uh, 30% of medium, the very low income and the low income numbers from, uh, that, so we could put them in this and, uh, have the, um, resolution be correct instead of last year's numbers, because those are done each year by the call, so Priscilla gave me those, and so that's all it is, it's just kind of a housekeeping, um, we'll add a resolution that you have in the front of your, um, binder there in the pocket, um, which is a resolution creating the Viva Santa Rita Subdivision Community Area Improvement District, this goes along with, we had the public hearing on Friday of last week, um, and Dory has been together and giving it to Abby, um, and we bring it in front of the commission, and this is the resolution that's the next step in the process that we did and we talked about getting it in front of you, and so you have that in the front, so we'll add that to the agenda. Um, and then the other item we're going to add is we'll add an executive session for limited personnel matters dealing with, uh.
The jail?
So, that'll be added, and then that'll be it, I believe.
All right, thank you very much, John. Next item on the agenda is, um.
There's no new business resolution.
Yeah, I don't really know why that's on there. Guess maybe we should have known, so we'll just go straight to county reports, and we'll, Mike, you want to go first, since you're down there, Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'd like to respectfully submit my report to the Grant County Detention Center, October 2013, item number one, policies and procedures, I know you've heard me say this over and over, we will meet with Manny Romero, um, in Rio de Oso on the 15th, and we will have a final draft, we'll have it finalized and, uh, hopefully get it to Abby and have it before all of you to, for finalization. Item number two, detention facility update, uh, we currently have two part-time positions to be filled, applicants are being interviewed, uh, today, and they're in progress right now, so we hope to get some applicants, uh, see if we can hire, fill those two part-time positions. Uh, the newly hired detention officers, an update on them, they're, both officers are doing very well, Officer Rios has been assigned to a shift, Officer Smith's continuing her field training, expects to be assigned to a shift by the end of the month, uh, the CEO of the Healthcare Partners Foundation will be meeting with myself and Deputy Anzola tomorrow, uh, we're gonna go over, uh, the protocol staffing training at the newly hired medical staff detention facility. Um, and there's no update on item three, item four, the training, this month Sergeant Gary attended instructor development course, and this training course will enable him to certify the in-house, um, training of our officers, which is truly great, I'm really proud of Sergeant Gary, he completed this course and he scored the highest in the class, so, uh, well, you applaud him for that, and I did congratulate him for that. Um, currently Officer, Sergeant Gary and Officer Hardisty are attending a field training, um, in Las Cruces, they're, they're currently starting that today, uh, what this will do is it'll allow them to develop a curriculum for the newly hired officers, and, uh, so that's gonna, they'll help them when they hit the ground running, as soon as they finish up their, uh, field training and, uh, give us a better product once they start. Um, we also have training for Sergeant Chris Lucero and active Sergeant Mark Lucero, they will be attending a developing and revising policies and procedures course in Rio de Oso, and we hope that this, uh, what we'll do is, uh, what I wanted to do is get everybody, especially the supervisors involved in the development of the training and policies and procedures, uh, this will give them a better aspect, uh, once we get ours back and, uh, bring them back, we need to revise them, uh, want to get them involved, so this will, uh, certainly educate them in that area and help us, Deputy Anzola and myself get that done. Um, I and Deputy Anzola have provided training for Officer Smith in the area, uh, my provider the training in the area of critical incident, report writing, and Deputy Anzola provided, uh, the newly Officer Smith with training in sexual harassment, uh, policy and procedures, ethics, security, dealing with stress, warning signs, and use of force, um, both Deputy Anzola and I have taken upon ourselves to, um, assist in the training curriculum while Sergeant Gary, who is our training officer, while he's attending his certification courses, so we're kind of taking up slack and, uh, certainly a learning experience for me, and, uh, we're both, uh, we're gonna continue doing this with the newly hired officers. Uh, Luna County will provide, again, graciously, they, uh, offered to, um, provide OC training for the remainder of detention officers and any other certification training that we may require. Um, item five, the inmate, uh, support program, I know Commissioner Hall, you've been asking me about that, uh, we provided the statistical information, uh, to the Legislative Health Committee, and also Luna County, they provided me with that information also, um, and this is what was required by the Legislative Health Committee, that's what they were asking us to put together, we gave this information to the Continuum of Care Coalition Coordinator, um, they have put that information together and they will send the draft to, uh, the Legislative Aid, and then, uh, they'll do any revision before we, uh, we're, we're supposed to go up in November, do the presentation again for the Legislative Health Committee, and hopefully, uh, we'll, we'll give them all the information that we need, and possibly they can carry this as a bill for funding. Uh, recognition program, uh, we have not received any nominations for this month. Detention statistics, um, the average daily population for the month of September, this is of half of September, this is I think from the September the 18th to October the 8th, uh, daily, uh, average population is 55, this is 20 less than last month, high population males is 65, seven less than last month, uh, high population, uh, for females is 18, which is five more than last month for the month of August, uh, September 2013, there were 82 inmates incarcerated in the facility. Um, monthly, uh, agency totals, arrest totals, Silver City Police Department is 86, New Mexico State Police 32, Grant County SO 28, Santa Clara 1, Bear 15, and Hurley PD 1, adult probation had three arrests. The detention facility conducted 17 district court transports, 19, um, Division 1 magistrate court transports, and nine Division 2 magistrate court transports, Silver City Municipal Court had five, Santa Clara had zero, Bear, uh, didn't have any, neither did, uh, Hurley Municipal Court. Uh, medical transports is seven, I think if you'll kind of take note of that, uh, we had seven as compared to 34 last month, and, um, so I, we're hoping that's gonna be the trend with our new medical staff. Uh, the total number of transports for the month of October was 57 as compared to 76 of last month, so we've also tried to cut down on the number of medical transports and also, um, the transports to other facilities. Jail utilization and occupancy, the number of inmates sentenced were 21, there were 60 that were unsentenced, uh, total custody hours was 6,485, the offense levels, we had 17 for felony, 17 were charged for seven, uh, for felony, 34 had misdemeanors, and others such as probation violations and warrants, total 57, or a total of 108 inmates that were charged, uh, these were the charges themselves, total number of hours, um, in custody were 15,498, and statistics, uh, this month show a decrease as compared to last month. Any questions?
Any questions?
Uh, just one for me, Mr. Chair, um, how's the facilities doing, and the facilities is the, uh, as far as the building itself, everything going good?
Uh, right now, we had, um, we had, um, Honeywell come in just a couple of days ago, there was some, uh, maintenance that they needed to follow up on, it's taken them a little bit, but they did show up, um, I'm sure they haven't quite completed everything, but, uh, right now we're, um, we're pretty solid as far as the facility's concerned right now, we're having to do, um, we're waiting for maintenance to come and do some minor things, there's some, uh, some, um, we're trying to put some slats at the bottom of the door, uh, this will keep the inmate from having to pass, uh, documents and contraband, um, we had one, but we're trying to get one that's, um, designed specifically for jails, because the one that we had just, they just didn't hold up, so there's a few things in there that, uh, we're waiting for maintenance to come in, but, uh, nothing major, sir.
Good, thank you. If you had to speculate on why your average population dropped 20, what would that be?
Uh, you know, um, just, um, and I'm referring back to, um, you know, my law enforcement experiences, usually after the summer months when school starts, uh, there seemed to be a lull, there seemed to be, uh, you know, a slowing trend, um, we do expect it to spike again as soon as the, uh, the holidays start coming up again, we do see a spike in it, so, um, you know, we haven't, um, we had the summer months, certainly we had, uh, we had an average daily population of about 80 inmates, one thing that, that does concern me is the number of female inmates that we're having, that does not seem to slow up at all, and, um, with the inmate support program and some of the other resources and the meetings that I've been conducting, uh, that's one of the issues that, um, that I keep bringing up, especially with, uh, this being Domestic Violence Week or Month, um, you know, there's, there's a spike in, uh, in the number of female inmates, and that doesn't seem to be slowing down, and, uh, you know, substance abuse is a big issue.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, a couple of things, uh, Cover Camino is just trying to fill the position for bus drivers, I mean, uh, it's, it's not an easy task, people think just driving a bus is, is that simple, but it's not, there are some regulations have to be followed, I'm hoping to get, you know, CDL bus drivers, uh, on all the buses, that's gonna be tough to do, because number one, you've got to pay, and so, but I think it'd benefit the, uh, the pastures safety-wise, uh, DWI program, I'll have a meeting today, a monthly meeting, uh, this afternoon, senior program, business as usual, Public Works, very busy, uh, they helped over at the fairgrounds on the water system prior to the fair, uh, winterizing the buildings now that, you know, starting to get cold, uh, you know, doing that, uh, work, uh, working with WH Pacific on the airport project out there, that should start, I believe it's November the 9th, uh, they were a little concerned about the shutdown with the funds, but I don't think that has anything to do with it, so we'll be working with them, there's also a film crew gonna be doing a documentary out at the airport, um, I think that's this week, I don't have a true date on that, uh, Justin, uh, is working with Train on the maintenance agreements, and I think some of them at, over at the detention center with the HVAC, uh, I think he's gotten with them to, um, see if they can, uh, you know, that's including the hardware, I mean, the hardware store, convention center, detention center, so, um, also working with a company, uh, out of Albuquerque to fix the roof over at the Silver Street, um, there was some leakages there, um, and so they've come in and, and hopefully they're gonna get that, uh, before the snow and the winter comes and we start getting some, uh, major leaks there. Um, working with the maintenance, the Grant County Airport Aviation Division, they approved our, uh, review they went through and, and with Mr. Anderson and, and were able successfully get through that, uh, sprayed some weed kiel, you know, with all the weeds and the rains that we've had, we, uh, the Public Works has been working on trying to maintain that, um, so, uh, continuing to be busy, you know, the conference center, Baton Park, uh, it's busy every weekend, and so, uh, making sure that the Public Works Department is out there on the weekends, uh, you know, checking on everything and making sure everything is working, uh, working with Justin, he's doing a good job as far as, uh, making sure his guys are out there and he's on call, they've got my number as well to make sure we don't have any problems, I know winter's coming, that makes it difficult at the park as well, but, uh, the conference center is busy, um, you know, every weekend, uh, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday during the week, and so, uh, you know, that's something that I think Grant County should be proud of, but getting that facility and, and providing that service to the public, because I know it costs, uh, but it also costs to maintain the structure as well, so, um, you know, one of those things that we're working on. So, uh, from a fire management standpoint, I think we're all happy because of the rains, uh, but now we've got to look, uh, to the fine fuels, uh, we've got, uh, weeds three feet high, and they're drying out every single day, and so I just encourage the public to, to be aware of that, uh, the catalytic converters, you know, pulled over the side of the road, that's how the quail ridge fire started, and so we just have to be diligent and understanding that, uh, the fire danger is increasing, I know we're going into winter, uh, but if it's there and there's a fire, it'll burn, and so I'm working, uh, with the Road Fire Chiefs Association to maybe put some kind of packet together or, or a public announcement to, just to make people aware, uh, I might be getting in touch with Gabe O'Keane at the Forest Service, talk to him a little bit, uh, as we go forward, yeah, we're going into winter, yeah, it's gonna be cold, uh, but several years ago, our fire season started in January, and with, you know, like I said, everybody's happy that it rained, but now we have to worry about the consequences of high fine fuels, and so hopefully that'll work, I was gonna get with the Road Department, I know they've been doing some work on some of the county roads and, on mowing those, and I think that's important, uh, so, uh, other than that, unless you're just a busy six months, and so unless you have any questions, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, you know, speaking about the county mowing, uh, I wonder if you could talk to DOT about mowing like 90s, terrible, and there's others that are terrible, that, that grass is high, first of all, it looks bad, next, I think it's a fire hazard.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, that's one of the things that, uh, I'm working with, Tim Heidrich, uh, with the Assistant Chief at Silver City, so we're, we're, you know, we're talking about the county, we're talking about the state, and we're talking about the city, all coming together to try to put something, I know the Assistant Chief at Silver was gonna have kind of the same discussion in their council meeting, um, so, um, I'll work on that, on, on seeing if we can get ahold of DOT, I know that they've got a lot of roads to cover, uh, but you're right, I mean, as long as the fuels are there, uh, and something starts, it's gonna burn, and we just got to make sure that we stay diligent in trying to, uh, mitigate some of those, uh, those risks in our community.
That's the appearance too.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Anything else? All right, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, busy. All I can tell you is busy.
Less and more of you just trying to get away and drive on them.
Right, exactly right. Nothing major has happened over the months since, just a lot of, a lot of stuff that just scattered all over the county. Uh, we've been installing culverts, cleaning culverts, installing riprap baskets, repairing riprap baskets. Uh, we did get in a week of patching. The blade operators still aren't back on their regular schedule, they're still bouncing all over the place. I've got actually three blades in the dozer out in that cliff area right now. Uh, all these ranchers are starting to ship cattle, so I'm trying to get those guys helped out where they can get trucks in and out of places. We've already burned through ten thousand gallons of fuel since August, or July on there, and it's, it's going to be probably another month before we actually get caught back up. And I think, but I really like to thank the employees. They stay, they're starting to take off now because of hunting season and stuff, but they've, they've been there every day, and no matter what's, what's happened, they've, they've been able to jump on it and get it repaired.
Appreciate your hard work.
Yep, thanks. Keep on it. I always appreciate it.
Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to also thank the Road Department for all the assistance they did on the fair, on the fair barns. Um, without them, I don't think that that really could have, uh, been done. They put a lot of hours out there. And, uh, I guess I spent most of my life on the fair barns for the past couple of months, and a really successful project. Uh, the barn is real nice. Um, uh, there was a ton of volunteers, did the, just some of the work on the inside, uh, along with, uh, the Road Department, and of course, our contractor. Uh, I think he did, I think he did a fine job, and, and so, uh, so a really successful project. Uh, we've got, um, the infrastructure conference coming up, um, in two weeks. Uh, also, um, North Hurley Project, uh, I think that they've got their notice to proceed, and they're actually, uh, starting to do, uh, some work out there. Um, I'd like to bring up to the Commission that we need to start thinking about our next CDBG project, uh, trying to get, uh, it done. We haven't had, usually in the second week of October, we have the mandatory, um, workshop for CDBG, and, and we haven't heard anything from DFA yet, so, so I don't, I don't know what's happening up there, but, uh, everything that's coming out of DFA seems to be really, really slow. Uh, Randy mentioned some, some things about, um, the federal offices. Uh, we did have the EDA contact us and say that they would not be, uh, available, uh, to continue with our projects, uh, do everything as if, um, there was no shutdown, but there would be some issues in, uh, reimbursements and, um, actually being able to make contact with them. I'm assuming the USDA is probably exactly the same way, so, um. I, I myself, uh, am, uh, been doing quite a bit of, of research. I'm going to, uh, seek, trying to attempt to get a certification in economic development. Uh, it's an international certification, uh, so that maybe we can try and, uh, and get some strategies and some more ideas, and I'm trying to, uh, get some economic development done here. Uh, I, I don't, uh, since we don't have an economic development coordinator, um, not like it's falling in my lap because I have been involved, uh, all along, I'd like to, to be a little bit more knowledgeable about what's, what's going on. I think it may be able to assist in the planning process, so, um, outside of that, I guess that's, that's all I have to report.
Okay, any questions for Anthony?
Just probably, uh, maybe you can, I don't know which one, but, uh, is there some additional work on the barn that we're looking at as after using it?
You know, I think that there may be a little bit, but I think most of that, those monies can go towards, more towards your project that's left. Uh, they're, we're talking small, minimal things, some, some other wash racks and maybe some extra plumbing. Um, and I know that you guys, you're, you're doing something with some drainage, and I don't know exactly what.
Drainage structures to put in, um, because currently we've got, uh, all of the drainings coming into, uh, gutters, and we don't have anywhere for it to go except for on the ground and, and switch the customer drainings, uh, to put that underground.
At least on the north side. Are you doing the south side also though?
I don't know if it's going to be necessary or not, but I'm assuming that since that is fill, that, uh, eventually it'll, it'll start to rut out and wash away, so, so I think that maybe we might have to do something to try and at least.
Other than that, there was some concrete work or something, some extension or?
I'm not doing a wash rack for the cattle.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, and they talked about on the wash rack for the hogs, adding it a little bit on each side because when they clean out the drain, it would spill out, so they just wanted a little bit on each side, which is smaller than a side wall, so it's real cheap.
Mr. Chairman, I also would like to, um, mention that I will be attending, uh, next Monday, they're going to have an interim, uh, Natural Resources Committee meeting in Las Cruces. Uh, the AWSA will be on the agenda, um, and I'll be, I'll be attending that meeting. Uh, the, our project is actually going, uh, along pretty well. They have, they're really close to having a preliminary engineering report for, uh, the reservoir project, and, um, but they have changed the scope. Uh, the scope has changed and using, um, because of several, several different factors. Uh, one, because Baird has now pulled their project from the AWSA, and, uh, because of the, um, regulatory standards for, uh, using effluent waters for recreation, um, now the scope has changed to be able to use, uh, diversion waters. And so, uh, that was a recommendation made by ISC, and, and we concurred, uh, we could have, because number one, uh, we'll have fresh water for a reservoir project, and second, um, it can actually be utilized for a storage, uh, area, so.
Anthony, is the public meeting, is it going to have, Western going to be basically the same one you're going to have here? You know what I'm talking about?
No, there's the, there's the input, um, group meeting, uh, which is on the twenty-first at one o'clock, and then the public meeting at six o'clock in the, in the evening. Um, those are, it, it, pretty much, those are the quarterly meetings that they have.
I'm just trying to figure out which one. I don't need to go into both of them, but I wanted to.
Usually the input meeting is, is structured around the members of the input group, and the public meeting is, is more for, um, every type of public comment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Appreciate it.
Ryan, you want to jump in at this time?
Good morning. Good morning. How's that? Good to see you all, eh, and I appreciate your time, uh, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioners and our board. A quick update regarding Heal Regional. When I, before I do an update, I want to be clear about a few things as I've come to the work sessions to do our updates, uh, regarding our turnaround. The information that I'm presenting to you and the, and the community is based on our most recent board report. So the information I'm talking to you about today was from our board meeting two weeks ago. Uh, some, sometimes financial questions will come up. Our finances, we actually have a month lag with our finance, our financial reporting. So in the month of, at the end of September, when we talk about finances to our board, it's actually a report from the closeout of our August finances. I think it's pretty common in, in many industries. So I just want to be clear about that. If I'm asked any financial questions or as I present, the finances are actually a month lag. It takes, you know, a month, the end of the month, and then it takes our finance department several weeks to review and formally close out the finances. So I just don't want there to be any, um, confusion about, you, I reported such and such a number, uh, but as we release almost daily financial information to our organization in the spirit of transparency, sometimes there'll be, well, wait a minute, you said one thing at one meeting, yet we have financial information, real time today, that's a little bit different. It's always going to be like that. And so if there's ever any confusion about that, please ask, and I can, I can clarify that.
Hey, brother.
You're welcome. Um, so just an update, we're in the sixty-day, sixty-to-ninety-day portion of our turnaround. I want you all to know that we have a thirty, sixty, ninety-day initial turnaround plan, a strategic plan for our organization, uh, to be followed by a hundred-and-twenty, hundred-and-fifty, hundred-and-eighty-day plan. So it's a very strategic approach to this turnaround. In the first thirty days, you're well aware of by now, I've said it a few times, the goal was to get our new leadership in place, get people positioned in the right place. In the thirty-to-sixty days, it was get people, um, educated and clear about the strategic priorities of the organization, and to start the data analysis of the major projects that we know we have to do. And now, currently, we are in the sixty-to-ninety-day portion. Uh, a couple of days ago was our sixty-day point. So now in the sixty-to-ninety-day portion, we start the real work at Heal Regional with the implementing the turnaround strategies that we've been developing. That's, that's the, the benefit of hiring internal local caregivers. Typically, you'd have to wait, you know, as we said before, nine months just to get them here, another six months to orient them, and then the work starts. Uh, because of the, the people, the talent we have, our, our existing team of seven-hundred caregivers, we're able to start immediately. So at the, at the sixty-day point, we're starting some major projects. And one that I'd like to highlight that we discussed at our recent board meeting is a major project that focuses on the hospital's revenue cycle. The revenue cycle in healthcare is extremely complicated. The revenue cycle is basically, um, you know, a, a patient gets a referral from a doctor, and they come to our organization. They might come to physical therapy, or the ER, or the surgery center, there's all these entry points. And then you get registered, and that registration has to happen accurately. If there's a number off or an address, that can cause us problems on the back end. Then a patient gets their service, let's say, physical therapy, and then documentation is produced and charges are generated. Then that whole bundle of information goes to our coding department. Then additional codes, billing codes are attached appropriately. And again, if there's any mistakes at that part of the process or a holdup, it doesn't even make it to our billing department. Once it gets to our billing department, you know, patients are billed, insurance companies are billed, and our insurance companies have any number of different kinds of rules to make sure that we get reimbursed properly. There's also a time period for all that. If all that doesn't happen at a timely manner, we can lose reimbursement. If there are mistakes in the paperwork, an insurance company can turn around and deny us that payment. And if we don't appeal it and, and fix that in a timely manner, we lose the whole reimbursement for that case. So revenue cycle is of primary importance in healthcare organizations. We knew that on day one when we assumed responsibility for Heal Regional. It was a, it was priority one as far as our projects. And I want you to know, we've completed the assessment phase of that project and have already begun some interventions in our revenue cycle. I want to be real clear about this. We, this is a significant opportunity to pull revenue back into our organization. At any given time, there are millions of dollars tied up in our revenue cycle, waiting in coding, waiting in billing, in our denial process. So if our processes, all of our processes around the revenue cycle, and this involves most everybody in our organization, are not tight, we will be leaving potentially millions of dollars on the table, uncollected. So as one of our strategic priorities, we need to have a, a, a first-class revenue cycle. We have a lot of experts in, in the field in our organization, working very hard now to clean that up. Over, it's going to take several months to go through this whole process, it's a big project. But I want, uh, this group to know, we've, we've actually been able to have, uh, get some time with our Commissioners to do some in-depth, um, discussion about these issues. Uh, our hope is to do that quarterly, so we can do more in-depth updates, and also our county commissioner. But we want this group to know that we're now involved in the real work of the turnaround, and we have some preliminary, um, preliminary data that tells us we are on track, and that we have, um, identified opportunities to bring significant revenue back into our bottom line. And so as we go forward, future reports will be telling our, and showing our Commissioners in this board exactly what that means. Uh, it's good news that it's there for us to bring back into the organization. So we've discovered it, we have a plan to pull it back in. So that's the good news, that it's there. Um, and now what we need to demonstrate for our Commissioners, our board, and our community is our commitment to pulling that back into our system, so that, you know, we're not as much in fear of, oh, are we going to have to cut another housekeeper? You know, that's not what's going to turn around the hospital. It's these big projects, a revenue cycle, uh, significant opportunity there. We're also starting some big throughput projects. Throughput refers to getting people through a process as efficiently as possible. Um, we just announced a new, uh, Director of our Surgical Services, and we're going to kick off a major project in our Surgery Center to improve the, the patient care and the throughput, the efficiency with getting through our system, so that we can, uh, address the healthcare needs of our community quicker, get more surgeries through our system each week. So our, that way, our community is better cared for, and obviously, it improves our revenue structure in the hospital. We need to continue to decrease cost and improve our revenue structure. So I want you all to know that we're on point for our thirty, sixty, ninety-day plan. We're tracking along very well, uh, because of our ability to hire internal local talent, and we are, the assessments that we're doing are really paying off as far as, um, understanding really the impact of this, of the turnaround potential. And so I, I, I think that's, that's, that's it for this month's report, and I stand for questions.
Just a comment, and, uh, I know that you've already been through a session with, uh, Mr. Cunningham's staff, along with John, and, uh, I appreciate the work that you're doing. I think you're going in the right direction, and, uh, as a community member, uh, I want to say thank you for the work that you've done, and, um, you've opened up some areas that I wasn't aware of, and, and I think you're right on in, uh, the direction you're going. So thank you very much.
Much appreciated. I'm sorry, just for one additional, uh, item. Just want to be real clear, we're still in the middle of this transition, and we are continuing, our, our approach to, uh, our staffing levels has remained consistent over the last sixty days. We're going to continue to look at each department over time, make sure that they are right-sized, the right amount of people, the right staffing mix, um, over time, based on our workload, and, and that shifts over time. So I, I just want the community to understand that we're not doing across-the-board decreases, you know, in anything, we're not near that point at this point. However, we are doing adjustments here and there. In some areas, based on our demand, based on our workload, based on our community need, we are going to increase caregivers in certain departments. In other areas, we're going to decrease. So I don't want there to be a mixed message out there, wait a minute, you decreased a, a position in this area, but you increased over there. Why is that? The reason will always be the same. It'll be a strategic decision based on the workload, uh, of, of that department. And I know this is common sense and pretty common knowledge in other industries, but, but in healthcare, it hasn't been in the past. You know, we've been insulated because of reimbursement structures, so this is a new thing for healthcare, and so sometimes it comes out, you know, a little bit confused. We're going to do what other industries have been doing, right-size our departments based on ongoing demand, and, and that's all I have.
Um, during the detention center report, we talked about medical transports going down from thirty-four to seven in just one month. That's got to, got to help your bottom line just a little bit right there.
Sure we does.
Thank you. Um, well, we may be coming asking for help, but.
I understand that.
All right.
We're looking forward to that dialogue.
Okay. And the other thing is, I really appreciate you having the foresight to understand with the Inaugural Care, uh, monies potentially, we're assuming going away, and with the Affordable Healthcare Act, how important it is to get the people enrolled into the Affordable Care Act, because that is the only way you're going to get paid in the future, is if those people are insured through something.
Yes.
Uh, once the Inaugural Care monies are gone.
Yes.
So everybody, what, what we've done is we've turned everybody at the hospital and the, and the county and, and, uh, everywhere else in the insurance realm, and so if you have, you know, just so you know, if, if somebody's out there, we need to get them put on that because it's, there's not going to be a fund out there to take care of the hospital in the future. That's going to have to be done through the Affordable Healthcare Act. So I appreciate you having the foresight to, you and John, to put that group together, so.
Thank you. Based on our dialogue from the other day, and I want to thank some of the other groups that are out there in our community. HMS is one, several other groups that were way ahead of this. They were right on. So our effort is going to be really to support what they've already started. We should have been involved in this, you know, months and months ago, but thanks to some dialogue and recommendations, we're now in that process, supporting the other organizations in our community.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I want to go over my report for September. In the month of September, we had three hundred and sixty-two calls for service. We took a hundred and thirty-two reports. We investigated five motor vehicle collisions during the month of September. Within the last two weeks, we've been involved in several trainings in-house, actually being done by one of my in-house instructors. We've gone through Bayanan training, which is required by the state to keep our certification. We went through domestic violence and child abuse. We also had legal update training for the new laws that took effect in July. We participated in the cliff fair. I had a lot of my staff out there. We had a couple of incidents, nothing major. But I want to thank mainly my reserve program are the ones that participated out there, and they're out there volunteering through the sheriff's office, and I really appreciate what they do. You know, they're an asset to the office, and they did good work out there. I do have one position open as a deputy. One of my deputies took an offer to go work in Las Cruces, so he's going to be working for Las Cruces Police Department. So I have that one open. It's actually in-house right now. It'll close tomorrow. And if no candidates from in-house come in, then it'll advertise to the public. The other thing I want to do is I want to thank Administrator Carrillo for the transports that they've been doing for us. It's actually made a big difference, working together, helping out with these local transports, because I am shorthanded one person in civil, and it really makes a difference to my staff to know that we have the dependability of the detention center to help us with local transports. So thanks again for that. I look forward to continuing to do that with you. I also would like to thank Earl for taking care of our parking lot. We had several potholes out there that, you know, became a little dangerous for the public and the staff, and they got taken care of. So thanks to John and Earl for taking care of that. I look forward to eventually getting it paid, but that's in the future, I understand. Other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
Good job, Ray. Your volunteers did a fantastic job at the fair. They were visible, they were out and about all the time. Great job. Let them know we think they did a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Steve.
Chairman, Commissioner. Right now, we're still in a lull. We've been working on the mobile home committee's activities statewide. Alfred just got back from a meeting up in Los Lunas, and that committee is establishing the kind of a guideline for the pressures statewide, where we're actually going to be getting involved in going after the delinquent mobile homes and manufactured housing that we have statewide. It's quite an issue. We have in our county, close to half a million dollars in delinquent manufactured housing, and we're trying to address it. In the past, it's been kind of an issue with statewide, whereas Property Tax Division reverted it back to the counties because of the issues of taking possession of something that they were not able to sell. Like I said, we've got our entire committee statewide putting their heads together and coming up with solutions. And right now, there's been suggestions, but it looks like there is enough interest that this will not be an issue any longer for the counties. There's, we're kind of working something out to where, when we go to sale and that particular manufactured home doesn't sell, that we have, because of the state statutes, we have the option to go ahead and have almost immediately a secondary sale. That secondary sale does not require a minimum bid. However, we are setting, we're trying to avoid that, but we have some interest by people that are into the recycling, and they may even participate in the first option with the minimum bids, to be able to take those and take possession of them and take care of getting them recycled and not end up in our landfill and so on. So that's a big step, both for us collecting the delinquent taxes and getting rid of some of the problem. We have had several of the new certificates issued, and there's a little bit of, you know, growing pains, I guess you'd call it, something new. And, but we're getting people, they're understanding the system, they're doing it, and it seems to be going good. We had one issue with one of the movers. He actually came in and said, what do I need to do? And we had tried contacting him before and had been unsuccessful, but now he's on board, and so we're moving ahead on that. We're still having an issue with the transfer of the role from the assessor's office to us. Tyler is looking at that. They're not really sure what the issue is, but we're just not coming up, it's not coming across accurately. So they're taking people from assessors, developers, and the treasures developers, sit down and talk to each other, and they're trying to hash out the problem. So it's not a problem with either of the offices, it's just part of the software. So other than that, unless you have any questions.
Were you able to see the Albuquerque Journal this morning?
Able to.
To see the Albuquerque Journal this morning? The Albuquerque Journal?
Journal, no, I didn't.
Well, I want to ask you a question about that, if you didn't get to read it, but...
Well, I kind of have some background on, I mean, I'm not sure what exactly happened. I know that they had a significant loss. Just, you know, we don't have enough money to, you know, get too involved in that. We're very conservative in our investments. I mean, we did move about four hundred thousand dollars out of the investment account into the general fund, but that was just a short, temporary thing, you know, that's...
You don't need to comment. I'll print it out for you. It's a very interesting article. Okay?
All right.
Thank you. Madam Assessor?
I have no report.
No report?
I have no questions, sir.
Well, I have seven.
Ms. Clark?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner.
I know it's a little bit early, but our office election season has begun. There'll be candidate guides available in our office for anyone that's wishing to run for office. We'll also post a link on our website, so they can get the PDF and download that at home if they want that on their home office computers or their tablets. We have several offices up for election in our county. Commissioner District One, Commissioner District Two, County Assessor, Probate Judge, along with the Sheriff. Those offices will be up for election this coming cycle. Sign-up date for those offices are March eleventh in our office of next year. Along with that, we will come in front of the commission next month with a resolution to set polling places for the general and primary elections next year. I would like to keep what we did last election cycle, and that is use the voting convenience centers. And this time, we'll be adding a couple. We know that we have some internet access out at Cliff High School, as well as San Odens, so we'll be adding those to the list of voting convenience centers. That way, those individuals that live in those areas will be included in our things here in town and won't have to vote provisionally from now on. So that would be my recommendation. Again, we'll bring the resolution in front of you next month. I'll email the resolution to you beforehand, so you can have a look at it. If you guys have any changes or don't want to go in that direction, we can go back to traditional.
Well, and I think that we can pretty much guarantee that the Detention Memorial Business Conference Center won't be tore, all the featherings while they're trying to vote either.
If I get some money, I can't promise it.
You're not getting any money by...
Kevin's getting itchy. He wants to do another project.
So hopefully, that'll work out for us, where, you know, we'll be bold for at least one election cycle in that building. Because that building was really, a lot of people did go to that building. I mean, that's what we look for when we look for voting convenience centers, parking-wise. You know, there's a lot of places here in Silver City that have been used as polling places, but the parking was just not all that great. The handicap accessibility wasn't, you know, up to standard. So the buildings that we've kind of used are the ones that best fit those needs for us, and that one is probably the best of all of them. So other than that, I don't have anything else if you have any questions.
We'll try not to tear it up. There's always Cory Caminos that doesn't need to be... Mark's left next to him. Okay. John?
Wanted to, you know, it's obvious in the front, we're getting closer to being done. They've put in all the heater wire, poured those portions of concrete in, so you just have those two sides, and then a walkway for the handicap ramp, and that'll wrap around in front of the handicap parking. And then I'll get with Earl, and we'll look at what are we going to do to patch in that area. And so that is what's left out in the front. They've put in the irrigation system, so that we'll have the dripper system in there. That's what those green round pipes are protecting, the drip system that will go to some planter pots that will eventually be there. So we're almost done there. As Anthony put, fair building was great. Everybody pulled together, all the departments worked good to get that done. We're, ICIP is in. We've put that in, submitted it to DFA. They've got new rules, that they have an online system, and we are supposed to load it all in there for them. And now this year, we had to print out a hard copy from the online system and mail it to them, because they didn't want it scanned and emailed to them. So we had to print a hard copy and mail that to them. And now they've just told us that there's a new entity page that they want printed out, because they can't print it out themselves up there. So we have to print that out today and scan it in and send it to them. So every day, it's a new thing with the ICIP, so we're trying to get there. We found out on the three hundred thousand dollars that we got for the sheriff's vault, they sent an agreement to the town of Silver City back in August. The mayor sent it over to me. I sent back to the gentleman that emailed it to the mayor at DFA, and he's no longer employed with them in the two weeks that he worked for them. He sent out the agreement and then left for some reason. And we found that we were never supposed to get the agreement, because it's supposed to go into the bond sale, and they never sent us the questionnaire. So now I'm awaiting them to send me the questionnaire to see if we can make it in the December bond sale to get that money. So nobody is responding at DFA. There's not a lot of people working there right now, is my understanding. So, and the ones that are there are all new. Nobody has any history of what happened, and that's why everything is kind of messed up for us. So we're still trying to work on getting that three hundred thousand. We've talked with the senator and the representative about increasing that money. It's on our ICIP as our number-one project, trying to get some additional funding, because the three hundred thousand was short of the minimum we needed. We really scaled back the vault the sheriff wanted to have, to par it down to about four hundred thousand, and then we got three hundred thousand. So we're seeing if we can't get some money coming up in January. There, other than that, we've got just, everybody's been working. The auditors have come in, done their fieldwork, and left. So now they're writing up the final information back in their offices, so we should have no issues meeting the November fifteenth deadline for it, to get our audit submitted. So we shouldn't have that issue this year. When they were here, I know they can't release a lot of information, but they didn't have a lot of questions that seemed like we were going to have any issues with the audit. Everything seemed to go well. So hopefully, we get a good, clean audit, and we'll go forward from there. So other than that, we've just been working. Like I said, getting ready for session. Meetings are starting to start, interim committee meetings, the travel will start, and we'll be up there for session thirty day. So it's going to be quick. It's going to be a lot of long hours.
All right. Any questions for now?
You know, one thing I think you need to start to think about was down by the road department on Friday, helping Western with a fundraiser, and his yard is getting full.
Yeah.
Now, I understand there's a local contractor potentially going to have an auction here in the next month or so. I'll get you the name and number, so you can get in contact with them. Maybe we can piggyback off them. And I know that Pope Works and Seniors and Cory Caminos all have vehicles that we need to get rid of. There's no reason to have that stuff down there, just deteriorating. If it's worth a dime, maybe we can fund some better worthy projects with that. So if we can work towards that, I really appreciate it.
No, and one thing we've talked about, and I know Jacob's been working with Larry El Torono from the road department, is because we haven't had a lot of auctions in this area, is going out for the bid process, where we do sealed bids, where we set a minimum bid on that equipment and get it out. And so I know he's been working with Larry, and so I'll give you an update on that, as well as if we can look at this auction information.
Commissioner.
Just a couple of things. I want to bring up a program that Mike Carrillo is involved in at this time, and it's that inmate support program that he had reported on. It's things like this that really help us as taxpayers and as a commission, is that, and what they're trying to do is take inmates who go into their system, to turn them around and put them out, you know, with some kind of hope. Getting them off the drugs, getting them, you know, in some kind of support within the community, so they can be productive citizens. And that's what we need, because then we're taking the numbers down in the detention center. So rather than getting bigger, we're getting wiser and able to deal with our situation as far as the community. And we're going to piggyback that, I hope, in the next few months with the detox program, and so that will help also. The only other thing I have is, there was another, oh, there's quite a few other meetings, but one that I'm pretty excited about now is one that I'm working with John on and the health council and stuff, is a bike program where we're trying to get the idea to lessen the traffic in Silver City, and in doing so, looking at a health issue, and getting employees on bikes. And so we're working on that. We're on the first stages of it. And John has told me that all the staff are going to be riding their bikes to work, and not yet. But we're looking forward to that.
Parking, the parking lot, right from the bottom.
Yeah.
So just how long it will take you to get the second to... Earl doesn't know you, don't tell him.
No.
He's going to be excited.
I'm excited about that. It's a win-win thing. We are decreasing the traffic and processing. It's a spin-off, it's a healthy activity, that then we show our children that this is something that's good, and get more bikes at the home maybe than cars. And so that's a good deal. So that's about it.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, I just wanted to make a comment I forgot to mention to you. You were discussing the inmate support program. Cindy McLean from the DWI program just contacted me. She emailed me two days ago. I'm going to be meeting with her this week, and we're going to try and put a program together for females specifically. And we're going to work with her, and they're going to, we're going to have some people come in to the facility and work, especially just with females for right now, and it's going to be an integration program to also help females, to get them back prepared, to get back in the community, and provide them with the resources, and hopefully, we'll cut down the recidivism for the females.
Good job.
with females for right now, and it's going to be an integration program to also help females, to get them back prepared, to get back in the community, and provide them with the resources, and hopefully, cut down the recidivism for the females.
Good job. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, I'll be last. Like I said, once again, I appreciate GRMC and Hidalgo Medical Services, working so hard to get the Affordable Healthcare Act, everybody signed up on that. I appreciate everybody here that worked on the Fair Barnes and all the things you did. It made a big difference. The fair was quite possibly the most successful we've ever had, as far as the livestock shows. So without that, we wouldn't have been able to do it. Got a lot of hard work to do for the rest of the year. You've seen the ICIP. We're working on everybody's projects, we're trying to get them all done. Don't know that we'll get them done. Budget's tight. We expect to lose some more money out of federal funds this next year. So, that being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Same here.
Second.
All those in favor, six, five, four, three, two, one.